All right, welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. Some of the staff is here as well. So with that, we'll hand over the workshop.
One topic today, Commissioners, we're going to do a DEI update, an organizational DEI update. Tanya Wall, as she has done since we created this initiative back in 2019 with the strategic plan. She'll carry the water on this today. She's done a great job on this. Setting this up and hiring consultant and working internally to move this down the track. Of course, we had COVID for 2020, 2020 and 2021. That slowed us up on this progress. But we're going full speed ahead again now. And so I turned it over to Tanya. And then we also have some consultants on Zoom today, so.
Morning Commissioners, before we get started and before we have Hicks Carter Hicks go through their PowerPoint and talk about what they've done for the county on DEI. I'd like to just give a little history and background of how this got started. So as part of Sedgwick County Strategic Plan back in December of 2019, that's when we rolled out our strategic plan with input from employees and from the community. And as you remember, that that took about a year to get our strategic plan up and running. One of the strategic goals for the organization was diversity. And that was defined to ensure our employees' policies and programs to promote diversity and inclusion to reflect the community we serve. So in order to move towards that goal and initiative in July of 2020, we approved, excuse me, the manager and commission approved a diversity and inclusion officer to be a strategic leader in the diversity initiatives throughout Sedgwick County. This position would focus on recruitment, community relations, and racial equity. We went through an interview process on three occasions and we were not able to successfully hire a candidate. And so we decided to move forward with pursuing a diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant who could help bring the organization the framework of a DEI plan forward over the next year to move the organization in these efforts. We also, in August of 2021, hired Tatiera Gary. She came on board Sedgwick County as a DEI fellow through Lead for Kansas. She also helped with our efforts and goals of DEI with the organization and also worked alongside Hicks Carter Hicks. So in February of 2022, we began working with Hicks Carter Hicks as an organizational diversity and inclusion national consultant with expertise in guiding organization and numerous government organizations through a successful DEI framework and initiative. And so to date, Sedgwick County has engaged in a variety of steps and assessments to help us better understand where we are with our DEI efforts and recommendations on how we can move forward. Milestones and outcomes accomplished include interviews with leadership, employee surveys, and employee focus groups, data collections, assessments, and reports, which they will go over in detail here in a minute. And then review of people policies, and so that's our HR policies. And then our DEI fellow Tatiera Gary has worked with, as I said, HCH, and she has began to build a resource of DEI definitions, training resources, and worked as a sounding board for departments with questions on DEI topics. So with that, I would like to introduce Gloria Hicks, who is the president and CEO of Hicks Carter Hicks, Erin Van Gronigan, who is the Senior Organizational Development and Training Consultant, and Maya Van Bosik, who is the Organizational Develop and Training Consultant. And they will walk us through a PowerPoint and talk to us about what they have done so far with Sedgwick County.
Jay, good morning. Welcome to our meeting. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, and thank you for the invitation to be here this morning. Most importantly, thank you for engaging our services to do this valuable work for you. And we appreciate the opportunity to support Sedgwick County. We have three components to our report today. Interviews, focus groups, surveys, also information that we provided through an HR audit of your documents. So I'm going to turn it over to Erin, who will go over our process with you. And then I will come back later on to talk about the things that we recommend. That looking at what we recommend kind of aligns with your new 2022-2025 strategy. So thank you, Erin.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to be here with you all, excited to walk through this report with you. So here you can see our kind of roadmap, our approach to assessment. We also created another roadmap that I believe was sent out organizational-wide detailing our approach. And essentially, our goal for this project was to partner with the county on its DEI initiatives specifically to get a better understanding of the current state. We know kind of where you all want to be for the future state, but allowing us to better understand, talk to employees where we're at now can help foster these ideals you all have committed to of diversity, equity, and inclusion, making sure that there's representation of the community and their needs. And then Gloria's going to be talking about the recommendations to help move us to that future or move you all to that future state as discussed. So here you can see our four main steps, and we'll discuss each of these more in depth as we go along. But we started off with interviews, interviews which we had a variety of individuals participate in from different areas within the county. Help us get a high-level perspective of where the county is at in terms of DEI. What are some things that are on the horizon that need to be paid attention to? Then we moved to step two, which is the survey, which helps us see what the rest of the organization, individuals from all different levels, from different areas, departments, can provide their input. We have quantitative data as well as qualitative data where individuals can share more information, their thoughts and perspectives. And focus groups are really a culmination of all these things, where we talked to individuals, we follow up on some themes that we heard from the interview surveys, as well as following up on what certain groups feel, what their perspectives are, based on their experiences within the county. And during the background of all this, step four, which Maya will be talking about, we conducted a document review where we took a look at all your people policies, practices, procedures, processes, with an eye on trying to make sure that they're as inclusive as possible, that they promote these ideals that you all have committed to and highlighted in your strategic plan. So once using all this data to understand the current state, we're now about to talk to you all about the themes that we found, the data collection themes, and the recommendations as well. So the first thing I want to talk about is the interview themes themselves. So a little bit of background about the interviews. So our primary goal here was to talk with individuals to better understand their perception of the county's DEI strengths, areas for development, areas for improvement. What are opportunities that could be further leveraged, as well as what are barriers that may need to be addressed to achieve this overall goal? So we conducted these interviews now about a year ago, April 21st to May 19th, 2022. Overall, we did 12 interviews with 19 individuals, as you can see, multiple one-on-one interviews, as well as several group interviews. We partnered with the county to see who we needed to talk to. We had a general idea based on our extensive work with government entities, municipalities, who we wanted to hear from with input from the county, and the county made the final selection. So several individuals, I believe, in this room participated in that. So thank you again for your participation. These questions are based, that we developed on best practices, again, our extensive work with government entities, and they got a final approval from the county. So when we, what we did after we finished all these interviews is we gathered the data and did a content analysis, which is best practice in the field for qualitative data. If you're in business, theology, psychology, whatever it might be, you get all the data together, and then what are those themes that came up across these interviews the most? So in the actual report, we have a number of different interview themes. For the sake of time, I'm only going to be covering the top five. And these came up across virtually all of the interviews that we conducted here. Also, before I dive into these, I think it's important to say that while some of these comments may seem very direct, straight to the point, that's because we are trying to share them as they were shared to us. We don't want to editorialize the comments or anything. We also make sure that we overcommunicate because we realize that this is something that's probably going to be reviewed multiple times. It's going to be utilized moving forward. So we want to provide and share all the information possible to us as we go through. So with that, I'm going to dive into the interview themes themselves, the top five. And the first one is that the county is taking steps towards promoting DEI. Specifically, people mentioned that leadership within the county is very much committed to these ideals. People have seen or heard a lot of communication about that. It's been highlighted. But there is some concern over whether or not this commitment is true of everyone, specifically elected officials. There may be some perceived reluctance to engage in conversations or engage in sort of new practices, processes, procedures, whatever they might be, to highlight these ideals and move them forward. So with that, people did have positive things to say. They really liked that DEI is a part of the strategic plan, specifically a focus on making sure that there's representation to serve the diverse community within the county overall. With that being said, people aren't really clear. While it's important they aren't clear on what are the actual tangible actions that are being done to achieve these things, people would really like clear line of sight, making sure that there's a sense of accountability for these things being implemented. And people also recognize that this is a long-term commitment, that things aren't going to happen overnight. With that, people want to make sure that there are some short-term wins, as long as these long-term goals that are clearly highlighted and discussed. While this is something that's important to the county in general, it was also noted that there's likely going to be resistance from within the county towards some of these efforts, whether it be misunderstanding of what DEI is, it being politicized, or people not wanting to change the status quo. There may be some resistance that needs to be dealt with as it goes forward, making sure that there's clear communication, clarifying any misconceptions about DEI, highlighting what is the importance of these efforts to the county overall. So this next theme, you can see it has an asterisk by it, and that's because while there was a lot of conversation around authentic selves, it was kind of split down the middle with some people saying, yes, county employees can be their authentic selves within the workplace. There was an equal amount who said, no, there's not. So we combined these. So no one actually said, hey, there are mixed thoughts here. But we wanted to note that there were mixed thoughts, that there was a lot of conversation around people being their authentic selves. So on the one hand, like I mentioned, you have people said, yes, we can be our authentic selves, saying that people can come in depending on their background, their history, their experience worldview, that there's a safe space where people are treated fairly respectfully. People pointed to some changes recently being made in the dress code or physical appearance, what professional physical appearance looks like, that has promoted more inclusivity, people feeling more welcomed, more like a sense of belonging. On the other hand, you had several people who also mentioned that there is one-off depending on maybe the department you're in, the team you're in, where there maybe isn't as much inclusion or belonging. Specifically, people noted there are instances of bullying, reports of a racist environment, microaggressions, things like that. And while this is not the norm, it does exist, and it creates a negative impact on individuals who are experiencing these things. So it's important to really take a hard look and think about or see what is going on in these various departments and making sure that this idea of people being able to be their authentic selves is true across all areas of the organization. So next, we heard a lot about selection, specifically hiring, recruitment, promotions. It's an opportunity to promote DEI. While you are all are doing some work in this area, some more work can be done. Specifically, as pointed out, the fact that maybe applicant pools aren't quite as diverse as desired when it comes to recruitment efforts. And this could either be self-selection, or it could be an instance where people may not feel like the county is a place for them to work. So further research should be done with the county to further understand these ideas, what's going on here. So in terms of recruitment, hiring, people talked about this lack of a centralized approach, specifically the hiring practice means that bias has a chance to creep in, that there may be different approaches to hiring and having a mixed idea where it's somewhat centralized, but there is somewhat latitude for hiring managers to make decisions. Might be the best of both worlds in promoting this sense of inclusion, belonging, and promoting more diversity. Also, promotion is an area where people said there may not necessarily be as much inclusion. That bias favoritism can get in the way of decision-making, that it might be not be the best person for the job that gets promoted, but the person who's seen as the favorite of the one making the decision. So with that, taking time to understand what are these processes that are being utilized. It was noted that succession planning was something the county did for a long history, but that because of COVID is maybe fawned by the wayside, something that could be implemented to help strengthen the county's bench strength, so to speak, making sure that leaders are being promoted or people who are talented get the opportunities that are needed. So moving on to diversity, it was mentioned diversity siloed throughout the organization with some areas being extremely diverse and taking steps to try to promote this idea of inclusion and diversity, building relationships with community organizations, looking at hiring practices. And other areas may not necessarily be taking a look at that. But at the bare minimum, it was noted it's important for the county in general to reflect the diversity of the community, so taking a hard look at that and taking steps to promote this ideal. It was also mentioned that leadership in general is more homogeneous, that as you move up through the organization, you see less diversity, specifically it was mentioned racial and ethnic diversity, but it may not necessarily reflect the community being served. So it was highlighted, it's important to have decision-makers that reflect the community that have that unique perspective to serve all constituents. And then last but not least, number five, the county is committed to creating DEI strategies and goals. Like I mentioned, while DEI is highlighted in the strategic plan, people are not really clear on what are the actual goals being done? What is the tangible action? People did really like, they pointed to the DEI fellow that they help promote this important ideal, but that hiring an actual DEI officer would be extremely beneficial. So those are the top five interview themes. I'll now turn it over to my colleague Maya Yan Bocheck to talk a little bit about the survey.
Sure, thanks, Erin. So, all right, there we go. Thank you. All right. So as you all know, Sedgwick County did distribute a survey for DEI specifically. The survey was created by Hicks Carter Hicks using DEI best practice questions. And so this was distributed to all Sedgwick County employees to obtain a larger quantity of feedback regarding diversity, equity, inclusion within the organization. We wanted to make sure that we were hearing from as many employees as possible. So we wanted to make sure that this survey was successful, so that way everybody could take it if they so chose to. So there's a lot of information on this slide. I'm just going to be highlighting a couple of things here. I just want all this information here for you all just to have it. First thing I want to bring your attention to is that the survey was open from July 25th until August 15th, 2022. So this was conducted last summer. And we got 1,427 total responses. And so this included people who entered the survey, or maybe just didn't take it or dropped off at some point. So we wanted to look at that data a little bit closer, and we saw that we had 1,100 completed responses. So with these statistics in mind, we ended up having a 47.6% response rate. This is something that we do really like to see with any sort of assessment that has to do with any aspect of an organization's culture. And we want to make sure that as many people have the opportunity to at least engage with it. And we were able to get from this large sample, a sample that was representative of Sedgwick County employees. So moving on to the next slide, I do want to bring up some of the high-level survey results first. There we go. Thank you. All right. So the first thing I want to mention is the top five and the bottom five, lowest and highest rated items. So we're now starting with the highest rated items. So these were items that people basically chose on average, closer to agree or strongly agree to. So the top two items here were, I am personally committed to DEI at Sedgwick County, and also I support Sedgwick County's efforts to create a diverse, equitable, and inclusive workplace. So these were both your highest scoring items. These are both huge wins. This means that your employee base is dedicated to DEI within the county. And so this is something that they do want to see. We also heard that Sedgwick County would benefit from increasing employee involvement in organizational matters. We heard that it's important for Sedgwick County to make dedicated efforts to promote diversity and near selection practices. And then finally, we also heard a high response or a high agreement of response for supervisor commitment to DEI at Sedgwick County, individuals specifically talking about their own supervisor. Moving on to the bottom five, before I get into these, I do want to just reference the scale at the very bottom of the slide. And that light red circle, that is where the lowest average was. And as you can see, this did stew more neutral than in that disagreement area. So that's just something to keep in mind. This is actually a really good sign that people maybe felt more neutrally about this than, you know, just straight up saying that I disagree with a lot of these items. So that's just something to keep in mind as we talk about the bottom five. So your lowest rated item, and this is where this dot is referencing, this 3.02 mean was around all employees being treated fairly at Sedgwick County. So this one, people felt a little bit more neutral on. They weren't, maybe, maybe they weren't sure if they agreed with this or disagreed with this. Or maybe they felt like they, that they could agree with it, but enough people felt like they could disagree with it. But it ended up, that mean sort of right in the middle. So this is something that can be improved, but it's of course not a bad score. We also saw two items related in feedback, also in your lowest rated items, so around feedback regarding DEI resulting in changes at Sedgwick County, and also Sedgwick County actively soliciting feedback regarding DEI from employees. Usually, if we see a low score with one of these, we're going to see a low score with both, because people may not realize what these feedback solicitations may look like. And so as a result, they may not know what those changes will look like, or if any changes result from data not being collected, that sort of thing. We also saw a lower score, but still in this agreement area about all employees having the opportunity to advance at Sedgwick County. So just a little bit lower, kind of goes with some of the themes that we've already talked about. And also around DEI being openly and honestly discussed within Sedgwick County. This one was also a lower scoring item, but of course, this is something that we're seeing in a lot of organizations right now, just because of the politicized nature of DEI. On the next slide, I also want to talk about some of the additional things that we looked at in the results. So as I mentioned, we did also collect demographic information. Specifically, we collected gender identity, race and ethnicity, leadership status, and also age group. And so this was for two reasons, one, to make sure that we were getting a representative sample of Sedgwick County employees, but also to break out the information and see if there were any group differences within each of these demographic areas. What we did see was that there was quite a bit of consistency across the groups, but there were some differences in certain groups. Specifically, gender identity and race and ethnicity, there were some differences within some of the groups within these two areas of demographics, where some groups felt that they had more agreement than average, and then some groups felt that they had more disagreement than average. And so all of these differences and similarities between the groups can be found in the report. In addition to this, we also looked at how those who preferred to not identify themselves scored. So with the demographic options, we did have a, I prefer not to respond option. So we do like to collect that too, because it can kind of give us a pulse on, you know, what additional anonymity kind of looks like within the county and what this really means. And so usually this falls into two camps, either people want more anonymity because they're more resistant to DEI, or they want more anonymity because they feel safer being honest in that way. What we saw based on the data was more this latter option, that people felt safer, that they could be more honest with this additional anonymity. So this is something that says that, you know, based on what we were seeing, more anonymous methods such as surveys might be a better way to collect feedback on DEI within the county at this moment, until people do feel more comfortable being open and honest, just as themselves. Moving on to the next slide, we also, as Erin had mentioned earlier, we did have three open-ended questions at the end of the survey to allow employees to share their thoughts in their own words on three different topics. These topics included DEI strengths for the county, DEI areas for improvement for the county, and then finally, just sort of a truly open-ended option, any other thoughts around DEI and the county. So we did have quite a few themes in each of these areas. I'm just going to be covering the top three in each of these. So the top three strengths that we saw, and of course, these were all analyzed using content analysis, just like all of our other qualitative methods. But the top three themes and strengths were around hiring, promotion being a strength, the current DEI focus being a strength, and also training and informational sessions being a strength. Some areas for improvement that we heard around were around training and learning opportunities was the top theme in this area. And these two, after that, are kind of similar, leadership and management and diversity within the organization. The areas for improvement within leadership and management were largely around, you know, the diversity of the leadership and management that they can see. So this is just something to keep in mind, that this is more focused on diversity, although there were some topics within there too that are more detailed in the report. And then finally, within the other comments, the three themes that we heard were around the recent DEI efforts, specifically they are being noticed. Heard about compensation. This is a reoccurring theme throughout the entirety of this process. This is sort of DEI adjacent, not like necessarily part of DEI that we're talking about in this aspect, but is an area that people do recognize as a part of DEI. So this is something that a lot of people have talked about. And then finally, leadership and management, they notice that leadership is engaged in this process, and they have thoughts about that as well. So as a note before I pass it off to Erin to talk about the focus group themes, these themes were generated from responses from only around 400 to 500 survey respondents. So this was slightly less than half the respondents. I responded to the open-ended questions specifically. So just as I put there, you know, all 1,100 respondents responded to the agreement scale items, but for these items, a little bit less than half responded to these. So you may see some differences in the average responses here, because typically people who are more comfortable talking about it will fill out these items where you might not get that as much with the, with the agreement scales. So as always, you'd find more details about all of these, as well as additional themes and other topics in the report. Now I'm going to pass it off to Erin to talk about the themes from the focus groups.
Thank you, Maya. Appreciate it. So in diving into the focus group themes, like I mentioned, focus groups are a little bit unique. So while they kind of, they're a little bit similar to the interviews in which, or group interviews, where we're getting a group of individuals together. They're focusing on these strengths, areas for development, opportunities, potential barriers. They differ because they're really impacted by what we hear in the interviews and the surveys. So not only the kinds of questions we ask, we want to make sure we're following up on themes. We're asking questions to get a little bit more understanding of what's already been brought up, but as well as who we talk to, the different groups that would could provide some additional information, some additional nuance that we may be missing from the interviews or the survey itself. that would could provide some additional information, some additional nuance that we may be missing from the interviews or the survey itself. So with these focus groups, we actually conducted them starting December sixth of twenty twenty and January tenth, twenty twenty three. So it spanned over the new year there. We had a total of seven focus groups, and you can see that focus group makeup on the bottom of the slide presented here. We invited a hundred and two individuals with thirty nine total participants responding, a response rate of thirty eight percent, which is about what we'd expect for a government entity in kind of having some informal conversations with people who participated in the focus groups. What we heard is that a lot of people may have not been comfortable participate, because they didn't know what this would involve. They weren't sure about the anonymity aspect, even though we communicated about that. So, but at the end of one of these focus groups, we had people say, we really enjoyed these, we hope there's more of these, so. We believe that any future efforts around focus groups, things like that, will probably have an even better attendance and will continue more often you do this. So how we selected individuals, there's a two fold approach. We sent out a survey asking people if they're interested in focus groups, which ones they would like to participate in. And then we assign people based on their responses there, as well as assigning people based on employee data, what groups they may fit into, and as you can see, based on maybe race, ethnicity, based on their position or their gender, things like that. So we had a good mix of individuals who wanted to participate and individuals who are randomly selected, bouncing out any sort of potential selection effects that might exist, that might impact what people had to say. So we know that data is extremely important, so what we did in the actual self is we broke out all the themes by these various groups, so that you can see the unique nuance between these groups, how they may respond differently, how they may perceive the environment around them slightly differently. But we also highlighted the overall themes, ones that came across most of the focus groups, if not every focus group, and we've listed them here. And as you can see, these really echo what was, what we saw in the interviews, as well as what came up in the survey. So one of the largest overall themes is that while DEI is understood to be important, people don't really know what are the priorities or goals. Again, echoing back to what I said earlier in the interviews, people know it's important, they hear a lot of discussion, but they're not sure what's happening, there may be some concern that this could be check the box, but people want to know what are the actual things that are being done, people want a clear roadmap that highlights, here's what we plan to do, here's what we did, here's how effective it was, here's the lessons we learned, and what we're gonna do moving forward. People also indicated largely that they want more opportunities to discuss DEI and share perspectives, so like I mentioned, people liked these focus groups, so they want more formal opportunities as well as informal opportunities. So informal opportunities, looking at ways to potentially break down barriers between or silos between different departments that people can interact with each other, because the more interaction you have, the less likely there is to be bias, you can promote more DEI that way. But then also formal opportunities, things like listening sessions, discussion sessions, breakout groups, having the opportunity for people to share their lived experiences in a formal setting would be greatly appreciated, and people said could help foster more learning around DEI. So people also pointed to recruitment efforts being focused on diversity, but they could be further strengthened. People pointed to certain departments doing a really good job of that, trying to really make sure that the employee base reflects the community being served. So a lot of this has to do with creating community partnerships, evaluating the process of actually selecting individuals, looking at job requirements, making sure that there's no adverse impacts, making sure that especially with compensation being the way it is, and the increased sort of fight for talented workers, trying to make sure that there's barriers removed, so that people that are talented skilled can be hired, brought into the county. We also heard about training and learning offerings being strengthened, that they're offered now, but they should really focus on what is DEI, what does it mean for the county overall? Related topics such as allyship, cultural competency, unconscious bias, LGBTQI plus issues. That these are especially important for positions, departments that are community facing, more community facing. And also training should be focused for those in leadership positions, how do you manage diverse teams? Have you fostered inclusion and belonging with your direct reports or those who are under you? And then last but not least for the focus groups was communication should be reconsidered to ensure relevant information is shared, employees are kept up to date. So as mentioned over and over again, that email is probably the most utilized aspect of communication, but can be really difficult for people who don't have access to email easily, or are out in field or extremely busy, so thinking of other ways to communicate, physical signage, maybe thinking about some app based communication, share short information, posting things on a pay website, but then also looking at other alternatives such as creating a requirement for managers or supervisors to share information in general, but specifically about DEI in their weekly or monthly meetings, whatever that looks like, breaking down those barriers. Also creating some sort of repository where leaders in certain departments can share what they've done to promote DEI, so that others can easily access it, look at what's been done, and adapt it for their area. So those are the overall focus group themes, again, we have those split out in the final report by the different groups, so that you can see group differences. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maya again to briefly talk about the people and practice policy audit.
Sure, thank you, Aaron. So the people policy and practice audit was a data collection process that was going on throughout the background of the entire project. This part does take a lot of time, so while the interviews were happening, focus groups, survey, this was something that we were working on in the background as well. So what we did was, we reviewed over a hundred items with a fine tooth comb, and reviewed everything from simple things like language usage to policy and practice and DEI best practices being used. So of those over a hundred items, we reviewed ninety personnel policies and procedures. These included items around responsibilities, employment, benefit, you know, disciplinary and work environment policies, separation from employment, training, compensation. All of those aspects, we did review those. We also reviewed employee development and educational documents, so anything to do with your training and development of your employees. We looked at your benefit summaries, just to see what benefits that you provide and what the details of those are. And then finally, of course, we also looked at the employee census data, just that way we, that way we could get a better idea of what your employee data, your employee census data looks like, but also how you collect that data. So some notes about this audit, all of the items that we requested, I mentioned that we reviewed quite a lot of items. So all of the items requested are listed in the red box, so Sedgwick County saw this list, and then they provided additional items. And of course, we said things like, hey, we noticed that this document was mentioned in one of these policies, can we take a look at that? It could be relevant, that sort of thing. So with this, as I mentioned, we went through each and every item, we listed strengths and areas for improvement as applicable. We presented this data to HR a few weeks ago, and we also made some updates made based on the feedback from HR, so that way we can hear more about, you know, why certain policies are the way that they are, and so that way we can really shape our recommendations to match Sedgwick County's needs and what is actually applicable for the county. So as with all of our recommendations, they were truly just recommendations. So these are just things that we think that could help to improve the documents that you do use. But of course, also with policy recommendations specifically, any substantial changes should always be reviewed by the county's legal counsel, because we're not attorneys, and there may be specific legal differences, even from the time that we did this to now, that may impact some of the policy recommendations that we've made. So going into the results, overall, I wanted to highlight that much of the documentation and policies that were audited did meet DEI best practices. And these are DEI best practices based on the Global Diversity Equity Inclusion Benchmarks, diversityin.com, and of course, our firm's ninety plus years of combined DEI experience, so this is a great result to have. There are of course some areas for improvement, but there were no red flags that we saw, which we don't get to say that very often, that we don't have any red flags, so that's just something to highlight and congratulate you all on. All recommendations that I'm going to be talking about at the high level, and also more specifically, can be found in the specific report for this that was given to HR. So some of the high level recommendations to let you know some of the things that we were suggesting that could be helpful. First, we're around recommendations with language swaps, so things like swapping out gendered language for more gender neutral language, things like, now if you're gonna say he slash she, just say the employee or they, if that makes the most sense. Gendered nouns such as son or daughter, changing that to like children, that sort of thing, just to make sure no less words are being used, it's more inclusive down the line, and so that way it's applicable to everyone. We also saw that there were opportunities for more training and development to meet DEI goals. So we saw that there's a lot of decision making positions, a lot of decision making hiring authorities, that sort of thing. So we saw that there were a lot of opportunities, if you all wanted to do this, to do bias training, to make sure the bias does not impact those decisions, decisions, and everything is made with objective decision making. We also saw that there was the opportunity for general DEI behaviors and language training. You know, DEI language is gonna differ from each organization, and the county is no different here. So making sure that all of those specific ways that you were defining DEI is, you know, shared across the entire county, so that way there's a shared understanding of what DEI really is and what it means for the county. That can be very helpful here for that training as well. We also saw that there were opportunities to expand benefits for employees. As you all know, compensation was something that we heard about across the entire data collection. So we provided some recommendations to consider based on the documentation, including several cost effective solutions to help make positions more attractive to the existing talent and also to future diverse talent. And of course, we always like to mention that DEI best practice policies that you all have are only as effective if they are enforced. So we saw that there were opportunities to put value behind engaging in those behaviors through performance management, also opportunities to further standardize decision making processes to reduce bias's impact on decision making, and also just to make this more straightforward of a process. One thing I didn't mention in a bullet, but I also just wanted to mention here was that we did, of course, look at your employee census data, and we saw that there were also some opportunities there to be more inclusive and have more, you know, more aspects of diversity, to get a better idea of the existing diversity that you do have in your employee base. So things like expanding race and ethnicity options, that way they're more inclusive and more nuanced, and also maybe even adding additional demographics where permitted by law. So with this, I'm going to pass it off to Gloria, and Gloria's gonna talk more about our recommendations that are based on all of this data.
I believe you're muted, Gloria.
Okay, I just unmuted. Thank you so much for your attention while we go through all of this information. This may be a good point to just stop and ask, are there any questions about the focus groups, the interviews, the survey, or the document audit? The data that we have presented thus far?
Well, thank you. We'll ask if there's any comments, but overall, I was pleased with the one comment that said, no red flags, and we seem to be following the DEI best practices, so that's, that was encouraging. And the survey, the survey information where you showed the dots looked like the slide number nine, even the five lowest rating, the five lowest were just barreling, is barely right of neutral. So seems like there are some encouraging things, I'm sure there's more steps as you recommend, but, but thank you for your efforts, and thank you for HR and everybody participating. So any other comments? Commissions? Okay, Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Chairman. Back to the focus groups, I'm curious, how were the hundred and two that were invited, how were they selected?
Great question. So as I mentioned, we had sent out an additional survey question to ask people if they're interested in participating. We asked individuals to say, or let us know which one they want to participate in, which focus group, and then ask them to provide a reason why. That's because while we were conducting this, there had been issues of individuals, issues of violence against certain communities, certain groups, so we wanted to make sure people then want to participate in a focus group to create unsafe environment. So when individuals selected or said they wanted to be a part of a focus group, they were put into that focus group. And then we filled these out also with random selection for those groups where we had HR qualified data, so. The ones that we relied strictly on volunteers for, volunteers for were the LGBTQI plus focus group, as well as the individuals with disabilities, because those two focus groups, there's no HR data. The rest of those were a mix of the volunteers, and then random selection to balance out any potential volunteer effects.
Yeah, I have a similar question about the interview process, but I noticed on page five of the, of the assessment report, it talks about, it breaks, it breaks down the numbers, specifically how many of each of these demographics are, they're part of that thirty nine that participated. What is, what I'm curious about though is, for example, at the end of that list, it says there's, you know, women were one of the groups there that was listed. And it says in the, in the other report there that there were six women, so I'm just curious, certainly of the other one, two, three, four, five, six categories there, some of them were women, for example. And some of them were men, we don't know how many men were there, we don't know how many, it talks about breaks up black African American employees versus persons of color. I'm just, I'm just curious about how, how this, how these demographics were highlighted. I, I have no doubt there were, there were also, like, front, frontline employees. Does that mean that these were all white employees? Does it mean that they were not people of color? It doesn't say that, it doesn't clarify exactly the other demographics that these people might represent, some of those frontline employees might be men or women or whatever, but it doesn't actually specify, so I'm just curious. It breaks down, I think, eight different categories here of demographics here, but it's not really very clear exactly what the diversity makeup of this focus group actually is. It just leaves a lot of questions, I guess, in my mind. Same thing with about the interview group, interview nineteen people, and it says there's eight one on one interviews and four group interviews, how were, how were those group, how were the interview? Also, it also says that they represented leaders from a variety of different areas and/or those with specific knowledge about DEI within the organization, so how were these folks selected? Compared to the, we have again, three thousand points, how were these people selected to be the interviewee of this part of the process here?
Great question. So going to your focus group question first, certainly there's a mix of demographics. The reason why we don't specifically highlight those other characteristics is because we don't want people to potentially be identifiable. You know, if there's one person who is, for instance, an individual with disability, we highlight that they are a woman who is, you know, black or African American. It can reduce that idea of that individual's potential anonymity, especially because part of this required individuals signing up to participate on a Zoom call, so their manager may be able to look at their information and then also look at the breakdown, so this is done to protect employees' anonymity, confidentiality, promote that ideal of safety, promote that idea of inclusion overall. And when it came to selecting individuals for these different focus groups in terms of the invitation list, we made sure that those, these were stratified based on your employee demographics, the census data that Maya talked about earlier. So making sure for like instance, frontline employees, making sure that we had representation for invitees based on how many employees were in different departments, how many of your employees are white or persons of color or black African American, or females or males. So when we actually create those invitation lists, we bounce those out based on demographics. So going back to your interview questions, a group we interviewed, as you all are aware of, is we talked to commissioners at that time. And then we also talked to a mix of individuals who are either in leadership positions across the county, as well as, like I mentioned, individuals who may have specific knowledge about DEI. The focus for interviews, best practice in the field, as Maya talked about from our experience, as well as the Global Diversity Equity Inclusion Benchmarks, is interviews, you want to get that high level perspective, because that acts as your initial kind of guiding force for your survey, for your focus groups as well. So while the majority of the individuals we talked to were leaders, there were several people who have been very involved in related DEI efforts who may not be in a high level leadership position, so they were included in those interviews as well.
Thank you, Aaron, for that. Are we ready to go to the recommendations?
Yeah, they'll be fine, thank you.
Okay, alright. Okay, so when we develop recommendations, they're based on several principles. The global diversity, equity, and inclusion. The global diversity, equity and inclusion benchmarks, which are best practices in the DEI field. Also, most importantly, we look at what your data has said. And then there are best practices from the diversityinc.com organization. And so we put all those things together and also look at the culture in which you are operating in and what you want to do as it relates to your. Future state, so what you heard from Erin and Maya are your current state. These recommendations are to drive you toward your future state. Looked at two areas within your twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five. Strategic plan around leadership and empowering, an empowered culture. And so we think about all those things when we put your recommendations together. Because any diversity, equity, inclusion strategic plan, which is what we're going to talk about first and the recommendations. Needs to support the county strategic plan as well. And so you heard Erin mention the fact that people understand, you know, somewhat understand what diversity is, but they want to see more what it means. To the county, and so having a clear DEI strategy. Is what helps people put into perspective what it is you mean around DEI. And when we talk about DEI, you also heard us say it is somewhat politicized. That's because sometimes people don't really understand, it means all people, everyone. It includes the intersectionality of all the characteristics that each person has. And so when we talk about creating a strategy first and foremost, it means all people. So in developing a DEI mission and value statements. That's where it is clearly defined what it means to Sedwick County. But at all times, we want people to understand that everyone is included. When we put together a DEI strategy, it is about what is expected from you. As a county employee, the direction that you will be taking as a business. And how this supports your overarching strategic plan. So the development of a mission and a value statement is important, it says what's your culture. At the county. And it clarifies the ideals that you have around DEI, so the first thing. Is to create a strategic plan that supports and aligns with the work that you are currently doing. The other part of that also requires. That you track how your performance is against your strategic plan, just like you have objectives in your strategy. And you can identify what the outcomes are of the work that you are doing, no different with the DEI strategic plan. But what this does is it gives people a clear understanding of what it means. To the organization, to the county, what the expectations are around behaviors. And how you are going to manage your performance in the area of DEI. There's other things, you know, we talked about, you heard about it a little bit. And that is, you know, having a DEI officer or a DEI council. Generally what happens if you have a DEI council, they get all of the information that we have just provided to you. And they make a determination on what the strategy should be, they help you. As leaders of the organization, as commissioners and leadership team, develop a strategy. So this is giving them the data to do that now. The other part of that is who's going to drive this strategy and some organizations, people are wearing two hats. I will tell you as having done that myself, wearing two hats with. The regular job of the head of HR and then also overseeing DEI. That can somewhat be laborious. And some things sometimes don't always happen because you're wearing two hats, so that's one of the reasons that we said. You know, consider a DEI officer. Or give some of that responsibility to a council to help drive your DEI strategy. The other thing that we know is extremely important is to have an approach around communications. Because what we are talking about is disseminating information about your strategy. The mission, the vision, the values around DEI, what it specifically means to the county. And how you will approach implementing a DEI strategy. And so what's important is that people understand the definition of DEI so that they know that nobody is left out. And a part of that strategy conversation and the strategy development. Is not only is it your mission and vision and values around DEI, it is what DEI means. And it's customized to what it means for the county. But a communication plan and a communication approach. To disseminate that information is critically important so that people are aligned. And they hear what it means and they can focus on what your expectations are around DEI. I do want to just take a minute to talk about this in a little more detail, when communicating. What the county's beliefs and values are around DEI. It does not diminish who other people are, DEI is about the behaviors that you expect within your business. Around dignity and respect and the inclusiveness of all people. But we are not saying by any means. That you don't respect other people's personal values and beliefs and who they are. You're simply saying this is how we expect people to behave within the county. And so it's about behaviors and Maya mentioned performance management earlier. When we connect diversity, equity and inclusion into the performance management structure. It is about the behaviors that you expect people to display and demonstrate while they work for the county. It is never to diminish anybody, any person and what they believe and value personally. Or their intersectionality. But you do have a responsibility to talk about what's important while you work for the county. So that's a part of the communication plan, but to make sure that all individuals understand that. And then you want to give progress updates against your strategy, just like you would against your county strategy. About how well you are doing moving toward your future state and moving from your current state. Communications can be various different types, it could be town halls, it can be emails, one-on-ones. We suggest you figure out which, what works best for you for disseminating that information. But how you disseminate it is just as important as what you disseminate. Item number three, we talked about focus on inclusion and equitable selection. Inclusion, recruiting, hiring, those are best practices to make sure that you cast a net broad and wide. To in fact, capture a diverse workforce. We are in a volatile recruiting environment right now. We are dealing with things like the great resignation, we're dealing with, I think the last statistics I saw. There's about one and a half jobs for every person, people have options. Employees, it's an employee market right now, not an employer's market. And so if we restrict where we look for people, how we look for people, we are probably not going to be branching out to find the best talent. So it is important to look at inclusive measures for hiring. That does not mean we sacrifice quality or qualifications. But it does mean we just look for more qualified people in different places. And so we have listed here some places to think about when you are posting jobs. And also having a part of the strategy that talks about how to inclusively recruit. Diverse candidates who are qualified for your positions. The other area is to conduct a job analysis. And what do we mean by that? Let me give you an example. I just had a conversation with another organization and they said, you know, we have an accounting degree. That's required for the job, but there are people in the job that don't have an accounting degree and do it exceptionally well. So we question our degrees or we question our qualifications. Are they necessary? Are they restricting our pool of people that we're going to be looking at hiring? And so when we talk about a job analysis, it's just simply to make sure, are those the right qualifications? That you need for the job, if you have people doing the job. Very well, that don't have all those qualifications, do you need to go back and look to see? If in fact, the qualifications might be creating adverse impact, might be eliminating. A pool of people that we should at least be considering when we have job openings. That's what inclusive recruiting is, looking at where you recruit, how you recruit and also. Those expectations or those qualifications that you set forth as being necessary before you hire someone. So look at your job descriptions. Utilize a question bank for interviewees. We do know that the way businesses can minimize biases. Is making sure you ask the same standard questions of the, of the same group of people interviewing for jobs. That there is consistency from an HR perspective. And we want to make sure that we have a consistent process that is as bias free as possible. When people are making decisions about hiring. So that's why the job descriptions need to be accurate. That's why the questions that are asked need to pertain specifically to the job. That's why candidates need to be treated the same for the positions that they are applying for. The other part of this, we say require a business case for selection. And what we simply mean by that is explain why you are hiring someone. Or why you did not hire to decide to hire a candidate. And I can speak to this because my background is a former chief HR professional. And so when we are from an HR perspective or looking at candidates. We want to make sure that there is consistency, the questions are relevant, we have cast our net broad. We have a business case in case we have to defend it. Why we hired someone or why we didn't hire someone because that minimizes our risk of discrimination. The other part of that is explaining opportunities for compensation. People want to know how they're going to get paid, they want to know they have fair wages. And in order to retain and attract people, we need to make sure that our compensation strategy and structure. We need to make sure that it is fairly and equitably applied. And that people are paid for the worth of the job that they are actually performing. We want to be able to attract talent, but we want to be able to keep talent as well, so making sure. Our compensation and our benefit strategies are those that are appropriate for the market that we are in. Moving on to item number four. Offer DEI training and learning opportunities. We want to educate and inform people about the expectations around DEI. In the company, in the county, the organization. We also want them to learn new things about DEI and to stay up to date on DEI practices. If we were talking about DEI, well, actually twenty, thirty years ago, we would have only been talking about diversity. Then we moved to talking more about equity, giving people what they need to be successful in the job. And their role, and now we're talking about inclusion, so this over time. Has transitioned from just diversity to equity, inclusion, some areas, accessibility and belonging, so. Helping people constantly stay attuned to what DEI means in the world today and what it means in your organization. So around definitions, respectful behaviors. Having people understand the need for cultural competency and also unconscious bias. You know, we all have biases, it's a, it's a human nature, it's human nature. To have biases, but do you understand them and how they can impact? How you work, how you promote others, how you build a team. So helping you understand and then helping you build a plan around doing better. Craft manager training, there's a little bit of a difference here between manager training. And just, I will say, individual contributor training. Individual contributors, we want you to understand the policies, the principles, the practices, the beliefs, the values and be aware of DEI. What it means to the business. From a manager's perspective, you are creating that culture that is respectful. And so there are certain skills that you need to have as a manager to create a culture of respect. And to hold others accountable for how they treat other people in the workplace. And for how you view and value diversity yourself and how you promote it. So managers, it's about not only awareness, it is about skill building training as well. So providing a variety of informal opportunities to promote diversity, that is also important. There are not just training classes, there are things such as. Posting information about different, different activities around diversity. Recognizing and celebrating different ethnic groups and different. Even just, just differences that people have as well as similarities. There may be book clubs, speakers. Readings, a number of different things that you can do to celebrate diversity and to inform people about. The different characteristics and the intersectionality of diversity, so. That's just some lunch and learns, there's a myriad of different things. Allow people to just further educate themselves and share information about themselves. So when we talk about learning and development around diversity, we are actually talking about building a curriculum. That has various different components. I'll go on to the next piece about institute regular opportunities for employees to provide feedback. As you heard Maya say, people are probably more comfortable right now being anonymous when they share information around DEI, so. Surveys are a good way to do that and to protect anonymity. The other thing, a way to get feedback around diversity in the culture that people experience and how they perceive that culture. Is to conduct exit interviews and stay interviews. So tell me why you're staying or tell me why you're leaving and a, a component of those interviews. Happens to be around DEI, happens to be around your culture. The other way is to promote ask, ask sessions. What we mean here is if you have a council, one of the councils that we work with. They allow people to ask questions around DEI, any question you want, frequently ask questions and they answer those questions. So we're giving people an opportunity to ask questions, we're giving people an opportunity to provide input. And we are listening to what it is that people are saying around DEI, people want. And it was brought out, they want to be able to have discussions around DEI. It might be focus groups, it might be interviews, it might be listening sessions, it can be a myriad of different ways. To allow people to share, to listen and to learn. The next area, employee resource groups, this is a best practice, what I will say about employee resource groups. It may not be something you just come out of the gate with immediately. That first you're going to establish your strategy, your DEI council. And then you will begin to look at what are some of the different tactics that we might deploy. That says DEI is important to the organization, you want to establish your foundation first. But one of those best practices, in addition to a council and a strategy, is also ERGs, employee resource groups. Those are groups where people with similarities and likeness. They form a group and they talk about how they can better themselves within the culture of the organization in which they are working. But also the challenges and issues that they face. Some of those groups are, are women. LGBTQIA individuals are allies, people with disabilities, veterans. People who are caretakers, it can be a number of special interest groups where they, where they have similarities. But they also welcome people who are different than them as well to share and to learn about each other. But employee resource groups are put together to help the organization further improve its culture around DEI. And to help people develop themselves as individuals and to come together to gain and garner support. The other best practice is a formalized mentorship and internship program, or programs or opportunities. And what we'll say about all of And what we'll say about all of these recommendations, there are some things that you will do, you can do. There are some things that you cannot do or does not fit your culture or your structure. I sit on a civil service board for our county and I formally have been the head of H R for the city of Clayton and I work with a lot of government organizations and I know some things around mentoring and succession planning and internships, you have to tailor it for the culture. And there are certain civil service rules and guidelines that you may or not, you may or may not be able to do to establish mentorships and internship opportunities. But Tate is an example of an intern, of a fellow that you have where you've extended opportunities outside of of the county or internally to the county. So formalize that process the way that you think works best for your governmental structure, but it is doable. Last benchmarks. Benchmark internal and external entities and adapt as needed. What I'm going to say about benchmarking, there may be other counties, there may be other cities or other government entities that you want to benchmark yourself against from a D E I perspective, but the best benchmark is you. You have foundational information. Now you have a baseline on survey, focus groups, interviews. As you set your standards going forward, how much better do you want to be in the next couple of years against where you are today? You've done exceptionally well, as Maya has mentioned. We have no red flags, but these are things just to think about. How can you be better? But yes, there may be other critically uh, important organizations that you might want to evaluate your practices against. When we did the H R or the document audit, we gave you a lot of those best practices in terms of what your people policies say and how you execute on some of those policies. Again, we're not lawyers and so we also said in disseminating that information to H R, uh, do what's appropriate for you, but here are some best practices and talk to your, your legal counsel when and where necessary. There may be external partners that you want to partner with, school districts, uh, community uh, advisors that can give you some insight around best practices for benchmarking as well, but the best benchmark is yourself. Recommendations are truly that. They are recommendations. We have things in here that you can do short term, that's low hanging fruit. And we have things in here that are focused more on the long-term effect. And that's the strategic piece around having a strategy around D E I, explaining mission, vision, values, definitions of D E I, having a council and or a D E I officer and aligning all of the work that you do with the overarching strategic plan of the county. That's a lot on recommendations. I'll stop there and I know there might be more questions.
Okay, thank you for the recommendation summary and uh, any questions from the commission? Uh, I know we're going to receive and file this uh, report, but uh, any questions? Or comments? Okay, none. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Um, just thank you so much for taking the time to share everything with us today. It's been really good to be able to hear it directly from you because I know we've seen the report, but being able to just kind of take it in a different way is always really helpful. Um, I'm really excited that we didn't have any red flags and I think that just goes to show the work that's already been done here. And so really appreciative of all the work from our leadership team that, that, you know, we could see something like that. Um, it's great, but it's not shocking because just thinking about the last year or so that I've, a couple of years that I've been here, we've seen, we've done work with our older folks that work here in life insurance, making sure that they have you know, equal life insurance that as everyone else or work with project search and making sure that we have interns here with disabilities. So we can do um, so much with so many different groups and I'm just really excited that we're taking that internal now to see what we can do on a daily basis going forward and then how we can also turn that externally and how can we get more people in the doors that want to work for us that maybe might not have thought about that before. So really appreciate the work that's already been done, the work that's happening right now and is going to continue to happen through um, through all of your work and each each. So I just thank you all for allowing us to continue to happen. And I know in twenty nineteen, we, not all of us up here, but part of this commission approved a diversity and inclusion officer. So I'm hoping that after we finalize all of this, we can take the next steps to getting that person hired and, and going from there. But this is, this is great work. So thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve. We appreciate it. And thank everyone who participated in an interview, a focus group, a survey because it was truly a collaborative effort.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. And thank you for the, the work and the presentation today. Just a, a personal objective and comment and then a question, Sheena, directly for you. Obviously, I think all of us here at Sedgwick County want to do what's right. I think we want to do what best values people. We also want to be aware of areas where we're not valuing people. Um, and I, and this conversation is more about many things we do is out facing to the community. This is about an internal, what are we doing internally? Practitioners of an organization, you know, it's important, especially in organization, it's one of the largest employers uh, in our community. I, I just, your opinion based on these things, we're talking a lot about our internal workforce right now, particularly in compensation, but how important is this conversation around D E I to attracting a future workforce? And then retaining our current workforce. I, I, I want you to level in a little bit that how we should prioritize this conversation and what's coming in, in our future workforce.
Okay. Uh, thank you for the question. I think it's very important. Um, the survey to me illustrated that employees want to have these conversations and they want to have it to be part of the workforce. So we are looking at things internally. Uh, one of the things that was specifically mentioned was training and we do some training, but we realize we need to do more training, more annual training, not only for leadership, upper management, but all the way through the organization. It has to flow consistently. Uh, another project that we're taking on is a new phase to recruitment and some of you might be aware of our rebranding that we're doing, but we're saying there is a place for everyone. So um, come as you are, there is a place for you, there is a job for you. Um, and we alluded to it a little bit earlier, someone coming as their authentic self. And so we've seen that change and we've seen that it's been a positive for employees as well. Um, I made a few notes, so let me refer back to those really quick. We've recently also updated our interviewing procedures. And that was something that the manager had tasked us with quite some time ago um, to make sure that our practices were consistent and were inclusive, but they were also non-discriminatory. So there are things that are going on within the organization kind of behind the scenes that we're making sure that we're hearing employees, what they're saying and making sure our practices are inclusive as well.
That's helpful. In my short time here, I've noticed these things are intentional on, on, in your department. Uh, I, you know, I just think if, if our, as, as a practitioner of an organization of this size, knowing that stability of our workforce, stability can perform good government service, uh, not just stability, but the health of our organization and the health of our workforce is a priority. You know, this conversation can go a lot of different ways and I'm, I'm certain that it will at some point in time and, and this and this conversation about a D E I officer and what that looks like. I'm looking forward to that conversation to figure out exactly how it is that we and that we do these things and do them so that we're valuing everyone in this organization, but I don't, I don't want to lose sight of what this really is about. It's about stability in our workforce and creating a healthy organization and valuing people. And I think it's easy in these conversations to get deterred, to go a different direction. Um, and, and I think as practitioners of this organization that we have to stay focused on what that looks like. And if you're telling us as the H R director that this is a part of the conversation for attracting and retaining our future workforce, then then that I would assume everyone up here, and I'm sure that are, are all ears of what that looks like. Um, so I, this is an important conversation. I'm, I'm happy to have it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And, and thank you very much for the extensive reports. I went through the three documents that you sent to us. The main thing, uh, I think we're doing a great job. Can we do a better job? Absolutely. Uh, every one of us are a product of our environment that we grew up in, that uh, our education system. How long we've been on this earth? I've been on the earth longer than I think anyone in this room. And uh, we can constantly learn things that we thought in the past were okay. We learn from our, uh, by having the education and by having people look at our project that we've got going here, Sedgwick County, we learned what we didn't know because you don't know what you don't know. Just not too long ago, uh, I'll give you one example. When I was growing up, there was a song called Jimmy Crapcorn. And I never thought anything about it, truly. Uh, and then I find out that it's a racist song. I didn't know that. I had no idea until I was educated on that. So there are a lot of little things like this out here that we need to make sure that we are sensitive to and that we are willing to open up and learn and grow from those. So uh, I appreciate what our county is doing to help us, help all of our employees, so three thousand employees, being able to open up, learn what you don't know and that might affect other people. Because if we're going to be leaders, we have to know what's impacting them, uh, what they're mo- what's motivating them, uh, what's uh, not motivating them so that we can all work together for the good of our, our uh, citizens out here in the community. So again, thank you for doing this, uh, this research force. I appreciate it. Uh, it's not something that we do want to put on the shelf. It's something that we want to learn and grow from. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and Commissioner Hall, anything?
I'll withhold my comments to later. Thank you.
Okay, so thanks again, everybody. Any other comments from uh, leadership? Elected officials in the audience?
I would welcome that.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
I would like to introduce Elizabeth yours. She is, uh, started this week. She is our new management intern. Um, and she comes to us from, she has been a uh, uh, intern with the city of Andover and also with P P M C. Um, her background is teaching. She taught middle school and high school. So we are happy to have her as one of our management interns. And then we have another that will be starting at the end of May. So we'll introduce her when she comes on as well.
Well, welcome. What was her name again?
Elizabeth yours.
Elizabeth yours. Welcome. Andover's a nice place. The Sedgwick County side of Andover is really. All right, Tom, thanks. And thanks again, uh, for the presentation and we have, uh, obviously received and filed.
So thank you.
Thank you, Gloria and team. Appreciate you.
Bye-bye.
It's your pleasure.
Right. See you, mate. Come on.